All right, we'll go ahead and get the meeting called to order for the workshop. And our first item on the agenda is something that I never thought in my lifetime that I would be doing for this particular person. This particular person has been with the City of Tifton for a long, long time. Back 100 years ago, when I was at the Main Street Program, this gentleman was our downtown police officer, and he was a mentor, he was a confidant, he was somebody I could go and fuss at when things got difficult, and would understand and encourage me to move on, and someone who I could celebrate with when things were going well. He's someone who I respect tremendously. He is a good friend to not only everyone in this room, but certainly a good friend to me and many of the citizens of Tifton. So it's sad to have to say goodbye to someone that we love dearly. And this is gonna be a difficult one to read through, but I would like to ask if our own Jim Wilkum would please come forward. Mr. Jim, we have something for you. Yeah, but he's not here tonight, I'm teasing him. I'm teasing him. He's so proud of you. We're gonna miss you. I tell you what I'm worried about. I'm worried about that man back there in that light blue shirt. How's he gonna make it?
Uh, he's been around a long time.
He has been around a long time, hasn't he?
He's got a lot of help, look at the guy standing there.
I know, he's got good folks, but you took particularly good care of him. It is my privilege and my honor to present this to you this evening. This is a proclamation celebrating Jim Wilkum's 21 years of service to the City of Tifton. And this says, "Whereas Jim Wilkum began his career with the Tifton Police Department in 1993 as a parking enforcement officer, and in 2005, Mr. Wilkum was promoted to Senior Staff Assistant/Police Coordinator. Whereas prior to coming to the Tifton Police Department, Mr. Wilkum served our country in the U.S. Marine Corps from 1946 till 1972, where he retired as a Lieutenant Colonel. And whereas Mr. Wilkum has served our community for 21 years and has been a dedicated and honest employee during his employment. Whereas he has faithfully fulfilled his duties, provided assistance when called upon, and professionally represented the Police Department," and I shouldn't have put it here, "run interference with Jack Stone when needed. Whereas Mr. Wilkum must be commended for his professionalism, dedication, and mentoring role he leaves behind. His work ethic and attention to detail set a benchmark that will always be admired. And whereas Mr. Wilkum will be forever missed by his coworkers. Now therefore, we proclaim that the City Council of the City of Tifton celebrate Jim Wilkum's 21 years of service to our community and wish him the very best in his retirement. Proclaim this 16th day of June 2016." Congratulations. I'd like to ask Keith now if you can come up. Keith, if you could say a few words, and Jim, you gotta help.
That'd be nice. Well, listen, it's an air which Jim is gonna be hard to replace. On the greater proclamation, the part about the work ethic and attention to detail, my contributions to that, that's why I added to that. He's gonna be hard to replace, if you can ever replace him.
I don't think you can.
He is a true friend, a mentor, and has a big issue with my organization. The last 24 weeks he's been training replacement, and I'm kinda worried about that, because every second moment sometime, she's, "I hope she does not have your vocabulary."
Never did I think, when I came to Tifton, like 25 years ago or something like that, that I wasn't going back to work. I've already retired three times before that. And I did retire one time in the Police Department, you remember that?
I did.
When I had my knee surgery. It was, I truly believed it, because I was so blessed to have him see, let him continue to work, it made me live a little bit longer, and it's something I like to hear. I'm the last one in my family, and I've lived longer than the rest of them. There must be something to work in in your life. It's never hurt me, I think. I said the other day, and I said, "You know, I turn 88 next month, and about 70 years of that time, I've had a shot." So I think it is time to quit, I'll tell you so. I'm gonna tell you something, I've lived before, I was retired, thank you all, but I'm living now.
Thank you, Keith. Yep, that gentleman is a class act right there. He's a good man. Okay, our next item on our agenda.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Before we proceed with that, I'd like to add an item to the discussion.
Okay.
Item in the workshop, this discussion of statewide contract for the agenda, if that's okay.
I talked with Larry about this. My understanding is, is that in order for this project to progress along according to schedule, the 20th Street repave, which is important to everyone, this is something that needs to be taken up, so it is necessary to address it.
Okay.
And it'll be okay to go ahead and add this to the workshop agenda.
Okay. All right, would you like to go ahead and address that now?
We can go ahead with the agenda.
Okay. Our next item then is provide the discussion for providing new alcoholic beverage license for Paradise Lounge located at 116 Poplar Street. Jessica, you got that?
This is a new alcohol beverage license. It was previously Sandro's finest place, and the background here was nothing that should prevent it from processing before y'all signed up.
Okay. Is Stephen getting our documents added?
Are these on?
We don't have our documents on the screen, the council package.
Turn them off. Turn them off.
Yeah, we're on item number two, but I was looking at for the application. What do we need to do?
About the application, I guess the applicant did have some alcohol-related offenses that...
They were earlier.
Well, I would just say, I mean, if I'm not mistaken, I was reviewing the alcohol ordinance, and there are provisions that I'd like to discuss with the attorney, so if there's a way that we could maybe, I know it's on the special call meeting for, no, there was none.
No, this is just a discussion.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Did you want us to look at those provisions?
Yes, yeah, that's what I was wanting to take a look at before, I guess we can discuss it further or whatever.
Is there anything else regarding this item that we need to look into?
No, I just think about those provisions or whatnot that within alcohol ordinance.
So we're looking at the past criminal history that relates to the application.
With that, with that location, yeah.
And what about, anything as to location?
The suitability of that location?
Yes, yeah.
Those two items?
I think that's some concerns.
Yeah, I was concerned, there had been a lot, a lot of...
Past issues with that location, yeah.
At that location, and it's a gang sharm, or what they call the Pucky Park gang, that's one of their...
That's where they're hanging out, so...
Yeah, that's where they do their business at.
Okay.
And the people of their neighborhood was concerned, they were saying maybe it's gonna be a terrorist bar there, and they're like, "The 600 gang frequently goes there too." So, and I think what we should do, if we just look at this, to keep those people safe in the neighborhood back there, around that place, because there had been shots fired before, and I think we ought to look at that real close, because Sandra came in, and she said, when she applied for, before, she applied for this regular business license.
Right.
But then she put the little gaming machine to that thing down there, and now that you want alcohol consumption on premises license, I think we ought to look at that for a minute.
Well, some of these offenses were in, they were later than the 90s. I mean, there's 2004, I mean, just looking at the application, so...
The, yeah, let's look at the area of criminal history on that, and then we'll just go through, use that provision to explore further on that issue.
Got it. Okay. All right, the other item that we've added to the agenda, Larry, do you want to pick that up now before we go to the special call meeting?
As y'all are aware, I'm sure, we have, we can purchase these through the Department of Administrative Services, through the state contractor, through the state of Georgia. And I had a group come visit with us, and they were telling me about this statewide convenience contract that the state has done, which allows us to still be in compliance with all of the competitive bidding requirements of the public works law and all that. So, we said, "Well, we have a project that you may be interested in looking at." And it happened to be the 20th Street paving project. If you recall, we rejected the bids on that, that we received on that, they were 2.1, almost $2.2 million, and that was way over our budget. This year, we've budgeted $175,000 to resurface 20th Street. Well, the contract that we received, or the estimate, well, actually, it's a contract, have not signed it yet, it's a little bit over my spending authority, it's 1.4, almost $1.5 million, 1.467. That's just 420th Street. The 2.2 million was for the Elmig streets as well, but there are only 200, what was the test, 260 something thousand, if I remember right. At any rate, I've had Rob look at this, we meet all the bidding requirements, so at the July meeting, if we can get all of the information we need about relocating the waterline in, which is also can be done under this statewide contract. I would ask the council at that time to consider authorizing this contract, another one as well, to relocate the waterlines, so we can get 20th Street resurfaced. Now, having said that, what they do is they will come in, and they will actually, they have a list of certified contractors already for...
Now, when you're saying that, you're talking about the Department of Administrative Services, that's today, okay.
And then they have, they will come down, and they come to whichever municipality it is that wants to do the service, and they will actually include in that bidding process any local contractors that are qualified to put in a waterline or to resurface the street. So, that's how they've done this one. But I wanted to make sure that you guys were aware of it, and that we are in compliance with the public works laws when it comes to bidding projects over $100,000. But to me, and I can't remember how many line items, they told me it was about like 15,000 different line items that they've actually bid out or requested bids for. So that's, if you're familiar with the, what's the name of that book? There's a book out there that has competitive prices, is it RINs? I'm lost in words right now. Anyhow, there's a book out there.
He doesn't have.
Means.
He's never heard of it.
It's the Means book, okay? And they have one similar to that, but they've broken it down by geographic area in the state of Georgia, so that you're comparing the cost of providing that service in that region.
That region.
So, that's my spiel for 20th Street and relocating the waterlines.
So what's the, tell me the dollars, I guess the total now compared to what it was when we rejected the bid?
Just for 20th Street, when we rejected the bid. This, this contract price is $1,467,438.54. The 20th Street surfacing project, when it was bid out, is $2,191,927.50, but that included the four Elmig streets.
So minus what, 200 from it?
This is still way under the total cost of the 2.2 million.
How much, how much was what, 2.7?
Yeah, 2.73 is what we...
So you've got a million, call it a million 467 plus 2.73, you're in the middle of the 75, which is what we have budgeted for paving 20th Street.
That's just for paving, it does not include, what's the anticipated cost of moving the waterlines?
We don't have a number on that, we've been working with them all week, trying to get something to bring here tonight, unfortunately, we didn't get a number.
I got you, so, all right, we budgeted one...
1.75 million.
All right, so we got 1.4, we got $375,000 to use to relocate waterlines, right?
Yep, to resurface Elmig streets.
Oh, okay.
And as far as relocating the waterline, when we get that number, we'll get with finance and make sure that we have the funds available. As you know, we have one project right now that's the Trevin Bridge Filter, which is a water, wastewater project, that's 600,000, so we have to look at the total number of SPOSS funds that are available to relocate the waterline and/or any other funds that may be available. It may come down to, depending on how much it costs to relocate the waterline, that we can only go from maybe Tifton Avenue to Elbow and Cell. That's the part of the road that's deteriorating most rapidly. Yeah, I know, I got it.
Well, but, but, let me add this too. Today at the chamber meeting, Senator Greg Kirk and Representative Plank Park were there. And after the chamber meeting, we had a very good conversation about them accompanying us to visit with DOT representatives to see if there's any additional funding we could secure because of the development that's taking place along 20th Street, you have the hospital, we have the VA, and that kind of thing. So, had a very positive conversation about that. At the Development Authority meeting later, Larry and Chairman Grady Thompson and Roger Dill and I sat and talked about that, so Roger's coordinating an appointment, and then our legislators said they would accompany us to, not promising that there would be funds available, but they felt like there was potentially some money that could...
Federal, federal funds.
Well, the problem with, this would be state funds, and we talked about federal funds, but what happens when you receive federal funds is it ups the requirements so significantly for how you complete that project, that it's almost not worth the effort to get the federal funds. So their regulations are so strict and so costly to complete, that you almost use any money that you get just to comply with their regulations. So, now, DOT also has regulations, but they're not as strict, so...
Just, we'll let y'all know we're looking at that, and we're trying our best to get this 20th Street resurfacing underway as quickly as possible.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Yes. And looking for money under any rock, we could find some money under some...
This process that Larry's talking about really streamlines the process.
Good.
Cuts down the timeline.
Sure.
As far as, you know, getting a project developed and actually constructed, and also really cuts your costs because of the ability they have to, or the contract they have available with line items.
Excellent. Okay, any other questions, comments? You good? You good, Wes?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. We do have Eastern Toronto News.
I think our next item on the call meeting as well.
Well, all right. We will adjourn our workshop and call our special call meeting to order. We're still operating off the same agenda, so our next item is the presentation of the FY 2017 budget.
They messed me up, they're criminal both sides of the paper and outside, I gotta get back. Go ahead, Lewis.
(inaudible).
There you go. Dion, are your screens working?
Not yet.
No, we're gonna have to wait one sec.
Flip the screen.
I got a hammer, it's not bad, you need it. It's pretty good, it's cheaper than a screen.
Is Frank still there? Frank, are you still on the phone?
I'm here.
Okay. All right, we're good, Larry.
Hallelujah, we have a balanced budget without a property tax increase.
I'm sorry, what was that?
I said, "Without a property tax increase." So, the FY 17 budget's 43.9 million, and of course, it is balanced in accordance with state law. And if you hit the next slide, that's a breakdown of the, how the funds are distributed or budgeted for each fund. As you can see, the general fund's 12.804 million, and that is the largest fund. Of course, you have SPOSS funds, and the others are there. Basically, this hasn't changed a lot since I presented it with the department head level, or here, I didn't do it here. Okay, general fund highlights. Total budget's 12.8 million, it's a decrease of 212,000 from FY 16. Decrease in fire protection revenue of 1.607 million due to separation of the city and county fire departments. Decrease in fire department procreations of 486,000. Recommended one new position and one upgraded position for the FY 17 budget, that's a grant writer slash public information officer position slash any other duties that I assign there. And then the upgrade is a upgraded one position in the environmental management division. The loss collections or projections remain about the same for FY 17. They're basically flat, it's 2.85 million this year, projecting about the same for next year. And this is a revenue sources, as you can tell, the FLO taxes, franchise fees, and local option sales taxes are the biggies. And then the county fire protection will no longer be there as a revenue for next year. I won't go through all of them, you've seen them all before. And this is a breakdown, little pie chart, so you can tell where they come from. The tax digest is about flat also. If you look at the nets, we're at 3.3 million for FY 15, and we're projecting about 3.28 million for 16. And there's a bar chart behind that that kinda shows how they're, you know, we have one spike there in 13, don't know what caused that, but they're actually trending downward. And then there's a chart of local option sales tax, peaks and valleys, but it's hovering around 2.8, 2.9 million every year. And then, the use of the tax dollars, as I said before, you can see where the big hitters are, the general government, police department, fire department, and public works. And then there's a chart there, shares were spoken down by fund. Police department's 38%, fire department's 23%, public works 17%, and then the rest is spread across all the other funds. But those, police and fire, those are the biggies. Hotel motel tax, we're projecting a million dollar revenue from that next year. We're trending about 83,000 per month. Changes from FY 16 revisions, reallocation was made, we transferred in this budget 200,000 from hotel motel to the general fund. SPOSS funds, these are special purpose local option sales taxes, one cent added to the sale of products, and we have two funds right now, we're still in SPOSS 4 and SPOSS 5 funds. SPOSS 4 funds are 1.27 million, and those are targeted this year for the improvements on the 10th Street drainage ditch, about 1.81 million, and then the landfill pavement improvements of 90,000, and that was a result of the outsourcing solid waste and recycling revenue that was left in that particular fund. SPOSS 5, collections through June 13th is 1642 months of 11.5 million, average monthly collections 289,000. Projected to end of FY 16, another 876,000, and the projections for FY 17 is 3.3 million. And then we have about 1.7 million in grants that we're working on, that's the safety loop grant, the Elmig, the street scape through projects.
CDBG.
And CDBG. And then here we are again, FY 16, we had the, our SPOSS 5, 20th Street resurfacing, I think it's supposed to be 17, not 16. The drainage on 6th and Chestnut, that project is 750,000. 18th Street ditch, again, we're talking about that one. And then the Trevin Bridge filter, we've already mentioned that as well. Enterprise funds are not supported by tax dollars, they operate by service and user fees. We have five of those funds. The water fund is budgeted this year at 3.42 million, sewer fund is 3.788, gas 4.523, solid waste collection disposals 3.6 million, and the theater is 436,000. The 436,000 for the theater is about 200,000 of that, a little over 200,000 of that is scheduled for the repairs for the theater, and that money is, came from hotel motel money. The water and sewer funds, we talked about that, and we're gonna have a continuation of rate study. Conservative rebate from ESTA, I don't know what the number's gonna be yet, but it's gonna be nicely presented to us, I'm sure. And one year of debt service is budgeted to, for the sewer revenue bonds, and that was the aeration filtration system that we put in, bubble aeration, that is why that debt service is in progress from. How much do we have left on that, do you remember?
It was previously the GFA debt, and we refinanced it, and I think it's about 2.3 million, the original was 2.5.
Yeah, about 2.3 million left on that one. SDA to CD. Rate increase in Tifton fees is required to balance that budget, about $3.50 a ton, from $38.50 to $42.00 a ton. Recommended rate increase of $3.00 a ton for the inert landfill from 15 to 18, and then for concrete, $6.50 to $8.00. And the, that budget also includes a lease purchase of heavy equipment for the landfill, that's a front loader, if I remember correctly.
Yes.
And capital projects coming up, financial system upgrade, as you all know, we have had more than our share of fun with gyms. We're looking for something a little bit more user friendly, but we can generate and get reliable reports from. Senior senior parking, 300,000, purchase four new police units, 202,000. Public works equipment, there's some trucks and some heavy equipment involved in that, about 666,000. And then here we have 20th Street resurfacing, Trevin Bridge filter, front loader, landfill truck wheel wash. Truck wheel wash is to help eliminate the mess we have on Mitchell Store Road every time it rains, it just turns into a mud pile out there, and we can't keep up with it. And then the street scape through project, 669,000.
And the police units, we may be able to get five.
She said we may be able to get five units for police department. Other funds, we talked about those, the special revenue funds, and those are the service fund, pension trust funds, or sinking fund, and they're required to be maintained separately by law. And this is a 3% COLA allocation that we have contingency in the budget for, and that's the breakdown by fund of what that, the implication of that would be to the respective departments. And then we have debt service, and you can see those, we're gonna pay off the mine this year, and then we have all the others for the public works projects, and sinking fund and airport, and that is stated up there. The budget will provide necessary equipment and personnel to maintain a high quality standard within Tifton, provide enhanced public safety with the police vehicles, increase employee morale, provide a contingency for COLA, allow for better employment opportunities, and aid in retention of qualified employees. Are there any questions? Frank, you still with us?
Yeah, Larry, the 3% COLA, that's the first cost of living increase in several years, isn't it?
It's been, what's it, four years?
Oh, I believe so, four years.
standard within Tifton, provide enhanced public safety with the police vehicles, increase employee morale, provide a contingency for COLA, allow for better employment opportunities, and aid in retention of qualified employees. Are there any questions? Frank, you still with us?
Yeah, Larry, the three percent COLA, that's the first cost of living increase in several years, isn't it?
It's been, what's it, four years?
Oh, I believe so, four years, that was some, but it wasn't.
We did, we did a, Frank, we did a Carl Vincent Institute study and, and we did implement that recommendation, I think that's been three or four years ago, since we did that.
And no increases in?
No, other than the market rate adjustment for public safety.
Right.
Right.
I know we had asked you at the last meeting to contact the county and see if they wanted to review the budget on any of the joint departments and, and just overall, here's the city budget, any response to that?
I did soon, or call Mr. Perd, I did not get a response to it, because I was wanting to have that meeting prior to the adoption of the budget, as you know, they adopted theirs, I think they adopted their budget Monday.
They did.
And here we are tonight, we're adopting ours, I hope. So, I do have a meeting with Mr. Perd tomorrow at ten o'clock.
Okay.
To discuss fire department stuff and whatever else we need to discuss. But we did reach out to the county to give them an opportunity to look at the budgets of all the joint funds.
Okay, alright.
So, the next question, now, we, you said you're meeting with him tomorrow for fire?
That's what was said on my email, there was a scheduled meeting, ten o'clock tomorrow to discuss division of assets, I'm sure.
I thought that was supposed to be in an SDCC meeting, that's what we?
We're gonna have a preliminary meeting to make sure we have all our budgets in the way.
Okay.
But we're still working on the SDCC meeting.
I have no, had no response to the SDCC meeting, I did talk to him. Uh, can't remember what day it was, but we have spoken and he could not make it, was it Tuesday?
Yeah, and he was, we're supposed to, the date, we come up, it was this past Tuesday, and I sent him three days next week, and it's down to two days, and he said y'all would make that determination.
Right, we'll talk about it tomorrow.
So, the, I mean, things like the joint thing with the water and sewer, they know what the budget is, I take it?
We offered it to him, but he, he opted not to.
What do they put in their budget?
They don't have to, we administer those funds and they don't put anything in the county.
And we had an SDCC meeting to discuss the tipping fee.
Yeah, we already had that.
So, you get all our money?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
We provide the service, we do the billing, we collect the money.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else?
Johnny, any questions? Jack, I'm sorry, Jack, what'd you say?
I'm excellent.
Alright, Wes, any other questions you have?
I'm good.
He did have cards at work. Would you mind, Larry, would you mind sharing that presentation with Latasha so she's got the numbers and everything? Or we can email one to you, so, to you have all that, so. Latasha, did you have any questions or anything, or?
Make sure you got this part by no property tax increase.
She got that, I saw her write that down, she got that. Alright, so we've had the presentation, at this time, we will accept a motion.
Actually, the resolution to adopt the budget is the next item.
That's what I was fixing to say. So, as Mr. Reiner so clearly pointed out, our next item is a resolution ad hoc to the FY twenty seventeen budget, so we will need a motion to that, Jack.
Absolutely.
Alright, Jack has made a motion. Motion is second, any further discussion regarding the budget? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Was that an aye?
That was a aye.
Okay. Didn't quite sound like an aye. Alright, and none opposed, so our budget has been approved. And I would like to say, on behalf of all five of us, thank you so much for all your work. I know, Lois, that it has been, it's always crazy at this time of year, and I know all the department heads have worked to, to make sure that this comes together and thank you for all of your work, for all of our city employees, the work that they do to keep this budget tight and, and to be mindful of, of what we're working with. Thank you. Alright, our next item is the, regarding the ordinance, amending the alcohol ordinance to provide for minimum age requirements, and I know we've got some discussion we need to have on this, so.
Council, we batted this around a little bit at the workshop, and based upon what I was hearing from council, as far as what you wanted, I believe, as far as underage people going into various establishments, was basically allow eighteen-year-olds to go into an establishment when there is a live musical concert or presentation performing arts. And there was discussions as far as what is meant by a live musical concert, and I think there's a lot of definitions out there. I believe what I understood council was looking at is letting folks go in, eighteen-year-olds go into an establishment that has a on-premise consumption license if there's a live musical concert. I changed the definition that we had previously in the ordinance to read, a live musical concert means a vocal or instrumental performance by a natural person who is physically present in the establishment while delivering the performance, and specifically excludes disc jockeys and karaoke performances. This is pretty much what Savannah's definition of live entertainment is in their, in their ordinance. So this, in my opinion, leaves open, if you have a single performer at a licensed establishment that would then fit within the definition of a live musical concert, thereby eighteen-year-olds would be permitted into that establishment as long as they paid an admission fee. As you know, the state legislature, when they said that you had to be at least twenty-one years old to go into a bar, except for a live musical concert, the state law did not, the legislation did not define, define a live musical concert. So, basically, we're kind of treading our own ground on how that's defined, how we're gonna utilize it here in Tifton. So with that revision, I did provide for the, another section at the end whereby it allows, this would be section sixty thirty-one point one E, and I added into that section, any person who has attained the age of eighteen years shall be permitted to enter an establishment holding a license for an on-premise consumption when he or she is attending a live musical concert or live presentation of performing arts for which he or she has paid an admission charge. And then if someone, if they're having some type of a live musical concert, then the twenty-one-year-olds who are admitted are, would be required to get a wristband showing that they are old enough to purchase and consume alcohol. Those were the, the main, were, are the changes that I, that I made. The other, the only other change that I made overall was on the employment of persons not eighteen years of age. The ordinance that we have currently in place allows for employment of persons under eighteen to, to sell or dispense alcohol in grocery stores. The state law actually allows for individuals under eighteen to sell beverages in supermarkets, convenience stores, breweries, drug stores. So I just expanded that a little bit to include those other types of establishments that are, that are permitted to sell alcohol according to state law. So I just expands that a little bit, tomorrow we have that. Okay?
I got a question.
Okay.
Vocal, if, if karaoke performances aren't vocal performance by a natural person who is physically present, what is it?
What was that, Jack?
I said if a karaoke performance is not a vocal performance by a natural person who is physically present, what is it? Why, I mean, karaoke meets your definition, I can see disc jockeys do not, because they're not singing, but I think karaoke, the people actually sing. Why would we exclude that?
In my opinion?
Yeah, your opinion.
I, I don't see a karaoke performance as a concert. I mean, I think that a karaoke performance, as I understand it, that I have visited in some establishments before, is that you would get up there and sing at, just randomly, anybody just kind of gets up there and does it.
Yes.
You know, I think a concert is more, in my mind, where somebody is going to be performing, you're advertising they're performing, and they perform, and you pay to go see that guy that's gonna be performing.
So if an establishment were to charge a cover to get into karaoke, would that meet, I mean, if you allow, would that meet, because?
Not with this definition.
Not with this definition?
No, I mean, in this definition.
Don't specifically, don't specifically exclude it, then. I mean, you're, it only doesn't meet it because you're specifically excluding it. If you didn't specifically exclude it, it's a vocal performance by a natural person who is physically present.
Well, then you'd have to go in and say, live presentation includes karaoke, dance, music, offering.
Okay, I mean, let's see, the objective is to have more business for the local establishments, okay? That's what, we would like to expand that, more people come in, more people pay money, that kind of thing, that's the objective, okay? So whether there's a, a, they're singing and it brings in people versus you bring in people to do karaoke and they're singing, it enables that business to, to make more money, and that's the objective, I think.
So what you're saying, I'll make sure I understand you correctly, is you're saying that you would like, if, if the, if the gin is having karaoke night, and I wanna go, and I've got my eighteen-year-old niece with me, and I wanna go take her to that, as long as we pay the cover charge, we, she can go in, she can't drink, but she can go in and, and watch and sing and hang out.
That's correct.
That's what you're saying, okay. I'll make sure I'm on the right side of what you're?
But I would say that in, in a business sense, charging for me to sing, I'm not going to that, you know what I mean? I mean, I'm not, I'm not gonna pay a cover to go karaoke.
But give, give the business the option, they might try it once and nobody shows up, then they don't do it again.
I got a question. If you, if you add karaoke to the life, to the definition of live performance, does that mean that the establishment has to cost, has to have a cover charge for karaoke?
If, the, the, you know, state law talks about a live musical concert, and so, you know, we gotta make sure, so what we're trying to do, as I envision this, is trying to fit what we want into that, what we want to define as a live musical concert. And Frank, I think to answer your question, I think the only way someone under twenty-one and over eighteen can go in is if they're gonna pay an admission charge for that performance. And whether or not karaoke is, can, is contemplated by the legislature as a live musical concert, I don't know the answer to that, because they didn't take the time to define it themselves.
But let's follow up. So you're saying a free concert, if they karaoke, if they got somebody coming, bar has somebody coming, and it, they don't charge a cover charge, but they're doing it to, you know, get people to come and they'll make it up in liquor sales. So do they have to, do they have to charge for it to be considered a concert? They can't give a free concert?
They can, but you'd have to be twenty-one to enter into the establishment.
Eighteen-year-olds can't go to a free concert?
That's right.
Well, that doesn't make any sense, exactly.
Well, what we can certainly do, you know, come the next legislative session, is go to talk to these legislators who decide to adopt the statute and ask them if either they wanna change or they wanna define it.
But why, but why, why do that? Define it and let them come to us and say, well, you don't meet the.
Well, I, you know, I understand that. But, and so, from my perspective, when we start talking about what is a live musical concert, and what did the legislature intend by those terms, I don't know, because they did not give me any legislative guidance as far as what they wanna do. So, you're a legislative body, and you can certainly use your own judgment as far as what you believe a live musical concert is, within the meaning of what the state law is trying to do.
State law was vague.
I'm not really sure what I'm doing, but.
It doesn't define it, does it? It just states, it doesn't actually define either one of those terms.
It doesn't, and, and when, and remember, when you talk about state law, what they're talking about is they're defining a bar as any establishment that has seventy-five percent or greater gross sediments and alcohol. If you're a bar, if you're under, if you're, you gotta be twenty-one to go in. The only exception to that is if you're paying, going to a live musical concert in which you have, are paying an admission charge. That's all the state law, all the statute says, it does provide for the, you know, the performing arts. So, it's kind of left up to us locally to determine where do we go with that definition in order to make sure that we're complying with state law as far as people who are under twenty-one going into an establishment that has an on-premise license.
Okay, we, we have tossed this around so much, now I'm getting confused. The way that you have it presented now, it says that you cannot go into, you go back to that same scenario I just used, I'm going to the gin, they're having karaoke night, my eighteen-year-old niece is with me, the way that you have it presented right now, she cannot enter that establishment.
That's right, because karaoke by definition would not be a live musical concert. If you want karaoke to be.
And it hinges on whether or not a cover charge or an admission fee is paid?
Well, that's part of.
That's part of.
It's got, it has to be a live musical concert for which that individual has paid an admission charge. So you really have two things.
But they don't set the amount of the admission charge.
That's correct. So you're looking, in order to fit the exception of having someone under twenty-one going into a on-premise establishment, they're gonna have to, you gotta be attending a live musical concert, and they're gonna have to pay admission charge. However you all want to define the live physical concert, that's what we're discussing now.
But, I mean, here, the.
Can I also say something?
Yes, ma'am.
This is not including a restaurant.
Right, just a bar.
But we're talking about the intent and this and that, so, okay, you've got a, one person singing, and you got the eighteen-year-olds, and you got the twenty-one-year-olds, and everybody's happy, okay? Nothing happened. Then you do karaoke, same eighteen-year-olds, the twenty-one-year-olds, I, I don't understand what's the difference, what's the risk, why they wouldn't be included? It's not like we're doing something against what, you know?
I think the objective of the statute is to actually reduce underage consumption of alcohol. It seems like to me.
Well, then why, why not have a cover charge?
How does that reduce it? Just don't let them go in at all, if you wanna reduce it. I mean, that's, that's craziness.
We, 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 we didn't make out, make out.
Well, that's what I said, just take karaoke out of that, and I'm good with it.
You wanna put that in the motion?
My question is, so now, I mean, hold on just. No, we can say it in a now discussion, right? No, I mean, karaoke, you have to charge a cover to get in, right?
Saying everything, cover, you can charge a pin.
But you're saying, as long as they charge a cover.
The law is saying.
Karaoke is okay.
The law is saying that. I don't care, I, I personally like to have them to charge a cover, I'm just saying, I'm just saying.
Probably see a lot of our establishments try to work towards becoming a restaurant in that, to get away from that. Why? I, I mean, I would just, if I was a business owner, I would look at that option to see if that is, you know?
Well, since they put no limit or no minimum on the cover charge, that's not a problem, I would think. They cover, they, I mean, these establishments do a cover charge to cover the cost of, of something that's, you know, it's my assumption, you know, but.
It doesn't define cover, is what you're saying?
I don't think it does. I, I wouldn't dare try to define cover.
It's admission charge, before you say they paid an admission.
An admission, yeah, two bits.
And so, really the bottom line is, you know, if, you know, live musical concert, you know, if we define that, then I think we're good to go. And I think, Commissioner Polk, Councilman Polk, you're thinking about just taking out the karaoke, and therefore you believe that that would fit in with a live musical concert.
Absolutely.
So why wouldn't the DJ, I mean, kids, I mean, why wouldn't?
He's not singing, it's not a live, it's not a.
Have you ever been to, I mean, a real nice, well, a DJ that really knows how to do his thing, I mean?
That's entertainment, that's a performance, yeah.
That doesn't mean.
But you got people that like to dance.
That doesn't mean.
I got, they like to dance.
A vocal performance by a natural person who is physically present, so, I mean, it's vocal because he talks and does, talks trash, but.
This is, this is Dr. Branch calling, yes, Dr. Branch, he said the horse is dead.
Okay, I, I made a motion that we adopt this, that we adopt this ordinance with the exception, we drop the words karaoke, the exclusion of karaoke performances from the ordinance.
Okay, Rob, is that permissible?
The chief has called it.
That's a good question, yes.
Okay, so that is acceptable per, okay, so we have a motion to.
We got a sidebar going on up there.
The chief, the chief has problems again.
See, Jim Wilkum retires and this is how it goes, it just spirals out of control. Alright, Jack has made a motion.
To adopt the ordinance by, with the exception of, to, but with the exception of excluding karaoke.
The words karaoke from the exclusion, drop the words, and the only exclusion will be disc jockeys.
I think you're gonna have more, I'm just saying, I think there's more of our businesses.
On a board, you gotta get a second on my motion.
Second, second. Second.
I'm second. Okay.
Alright, so we have a motion and you've seconded it, okay, is there any discussion?
Yes, I, alright, most of the establishments in this town have DJs, they're gonna use DJs to attract folks to come to their establishments. So, why, if you're, I've seen more times where DJs come to this town than karaoke.
So, what happens today when they come, they can't, the eighteen-year-olds can't go?
Cannot go. You have to be twenty-one to go into a.
Well, this isn't stop, this doesn't stop the eighteen-year-olds from going.
Yes, it does.
From a, with, with a disc jockey, they can't go today.
It's excluded.
So, it doesn't change, it doesn't change today.
So, right now, let's just say, let's use your example, if Julie wants to go to the gym with her eighteen-year-old niece to listen to DJ music because they both like to dance, she can't go into the, uh, establishment because she's only eighteen.
Correct.
Well, because I'm not opposed, I'm not opposed to not excluding anything.
I would eliminate both of those.
Will that give us more trouble potentially than eliminating just the karaoke?
You can say which includes.
So, you pretty much say, you wouldn't define, you wouldn't specifically exclude any, it would just say.
I believe that, I mean.
I would consider a DJ a, um, performance.
If he talks, it's a vocal performance, just make sure when the DJ comes, he's doing.
Haven't heard a lot of people sing at karaoke, they're talking.
I know, I'm not, I, I'm not opposed to it, I just didn't, I didn't think Rob was gonna, would go with the, with the disc jockeys. That's all I'm, I'm.
So, we're saying live musical concerts, meaning a vocal or instrumental performance by a natural person who is physically present in the establishment while delivering a performance, and it does not specifically exclude, I mean, you're gonna take that sense out.
If, if, I'm, I'm, I'm asking, I'm asking our attorney for his opinion as to whether that would make a, would be an issue.
I think the idea that karaoke is a live musical concert within the meaning of what the legislature was thinking, I think that's pushing the envelope.
That's further stretching than a DJ not being.
But then the DJ, I think you've done busting that envelope wide open.
Oh, absolutely, no.
I'll leave, I mean, I'll leave, I'll leave, then I'll leave my, I'll leave my motion.
But I, I do believe that you've got to take into consideration what was legislated in the template, it said live musical concert. And what I, again, as I often do, I have taken from other cities as far as how they define things, and this is where, where I got from Savannah. I believe that you're pushing the envelope when we were, you know, talking about live musical concert and we're including karaoke, and I think we're further pushing that envelope when we're talking about disc jockeys being, you know, a live musical concert.
Hard to quote you, you blew it up when you did that, so, I'll push the envelope, leave my motion as is.
Yeah, I don't think disc jockeys are a live musical concert.
I agree with Frank.
Alright, so.
I, I would like for you to restate your motion.
I can, as my understanding, the motion, the motion that is currently on the table is that the adopting the ordinance with the definition of live musical concert to say means a vocal instrumental performance by a natural person who is physically present in the establishment while delivering the performance and specifically excludes disc jockeys.
Period.
Period.
Yes, that's my motion.
That's the way the, that definition would read.
Yes.
Unless the motion has been made and seconded.
I have one more question, that doesn't mean that the word karaoke is then added to the live presentation of performing arts includes.
No.
Okay, I got it, okay, any other questions? Are you confused? Alright, I'm calling for the vote. All those in favor of what Jack has proposed and Wes has seconded, please signify by saying aye.
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 Okay.
Nay.
You really are voting nay?
Aye.
Okay, I thought you were kidding.
He seconded just a little.
Do we go to the discussion?
Okay, alright, so we have.
Four yeas.
Four to one, huh?
That podcast, I've never seen that, you make the second motion.
Well, he just changed his mind, he just wanted, anyway, it doesn't matter, we're good, we got.
The discussion changed his mind.
Okay. Alright, so, um, Rob, are you clear on what we just done?
Yes.
Good, alright, uh, our next item is the resolution declaring the surplus of the alley between Poplar Street and Cypress Street, we discussed that?
Adam, six and seven were just housekeeping, uh, y'all have already declared a property surplus. Uh, we did not do a resolution at the time, the resolutions are how we track property and surplus.
So, we just need the resolution approved, the paper approved, okay? Can we take those together or you need those independently?
Let them climb together.
Okay, is there a motion to, um, create the, the paperwork, the resolution for Poplar Street and Cypress Street as alley, the first alley and then Seventh Street and Eleventh Street that I've got, that's the alley? Do we have a motion or second? Do we have a motion and second, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, none opposed, alright. Any other business we need to discuss?
No, ma'am.
Alright, we are now adjourned, thank you very much.
Thanks, Frank.
Thank you, Frank.
Appreciate it.